I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. We are going to start with exemplary people, and Penny Plasky from Massey High School is going to introduce Ben Maieany, who we're recognizing tonight for his work on the Career Day. Penny, do you want to come up?
Well, we'll go right over here to the side. And I'd like to say a couple of words, too, before we turn over. I need to come right down here and go and cheer. John's going to probably take a photo right there for Facebook page. What I'd like to say is, every year for a number of years, Massey has had this Career Day, and I was pleased this year to be a participant in one of the vendors. Students came, a couple of students, maybe one or two came. It was like me as superintendent. I did notice that there were some careers that really drew kids in. If there was a gun on the hip, or a uniform, or, you know, EMR services or something like that, they tended to have a crowd all day. But anyway, I was standing there, and one of the people who was a liaison with Usatonic Community College was there talking with me. I know him from a previous life, and many years ago, Jim LaPorta. And Jim travels around to this, a lot of Fairfield County, doing events like this, okay? He's well-known, he's been in the business for many, many years, he's retired vol-tech administrator. And he said, Jim, he says, "I can't tell you how wonderful this thing is here at Massey, how organized it is, how polite the kids are, how interested they are in everything they do, and it all comes down from the work that Penny's doing and Ben is doing to make this all happen." And it wouldn't happen without dedication of these people, and in particular, our volunteer that we'd like to recognize tonight. So it's really my pleasure to turn it over to Penny to say a few words about Ben Maieany.
Okay, this is, this is great. This was this nice surprise when John asked me about this. He asked me, "How did Career Day go?" And I, I think, as Jim said, I think Career Day went really well. It has. Dave York started this many years ago in the, I found newspaper articles in his office when I moved into his office from the early 70s. So Career Day's been around for a long time. I took it over four years ago when Dave retired. And our responsibility, and Ben is on the committee, is much bigger than Career Day. We're, it's, we're part of Citizens Advisory Committee. So we, our biggest event is Career Day, but we also run Alumni Day where our freshmen come back. Ben's son participated in that also, so. And that is where our freshmen come and talk to our present students. We do job shadowing, so it's, it's a, it's a bigger undertaking than just Career Day. So I took it over four years ago, and I decided to put an, Joe Cobb's put an outreach out. We were looking for new members. At the risk of not stepping in the toes of the old members, and this was our shining star, a new member, four years ago. And he just assured me, he's got a daughter in eighth grade, so we have at least four more years of. So Ben joined us. Ben is an accountant with Reynolds and Roella, right? And brought in so many new people. We had so many new contacts, he had fresh ideas, helped me really streamline our process, that we could get a lot of these things done without endless meetings and kind of not reinventing the wheel each year. But he's always positive, he's like definitely balanced the old ideas with the new ideas very well, sometimes better than, than I do, I think. And brought in countless new participants, to the point where we moved into the gym starting last year. So we used to be in this space, but we've grown past that. And Ben really has been an integral part of that. In addition to that, he's organized through his company. This year it was six Visa gift cards were given, raffled off to students. We've had iPads raffled off, so we kind of have that added bonus for our kids to come in and be engaged. And as well, like, one, one example is, we have, you found a dentist that participated, and I don't know, you probably know this, but a student got hired out of a, a conversation that was had during Career Day last year. So really, many good contacts, and we really appreciate it, and we're a pleasure to work with. And you promised four more years, right?
Absolutely.
So thank you very much, really.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
You're free to say something if you would like to, too.
Okay. Well, like Penny said, I couldn't do all this without your help with the Board of Education. I mean, I really, you guys are instrumental for this, allowing us, giving us the time to do it. Have to thank the teachers, because the teachers have to allow their children, or their students, I'm sorry, to go to Career Day. It's not mandatory, so it's not something that, you know, all juniors go or all seniors go, but, you know, the teachers themselves, you know, think it's important. Some kids come in and they have an outline of questions that they have to do, so they're really into it. You know, they ask questions and they write down notes, so they turn it into like a project, which is really great. Like Penny said, there was a local dentist that ended up hiring a student, and he's really engaged and really wants to do it, and has come in the last two years and really added a dynamic. I got started, like you said, four years ago, and one of our first meetings, I said, you know, "My whole mission," and I said it in my first meeting, I said, "You know, these students need to have an idea of what they want to do when they go to college." So the old regime was kind of chastising me a little bit, "Oh, you're crazy, or this, or that." You know, students don't have an idea when they go to college. I said, "Well, if you're spending fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year to send a student to college, they better have an idea, because it's not cheap anymore." And that was my goal, and that's how I got started. I really wanted the students to have some exposure to what's out there. And what's out there is more than, you know, teachers or superintendent. And we had a lot of governmental workers. I said, "Well," which is nothing wrong with that, but I said, "You know, there's a lot of people out there, you know, we need realtors, we need investment advisors, we need bankers, we need doctors, dentists, nurses." So we're little by little bringing everyone in at a different time and getting them committed. The other thing we were trying to do is, obviously, not everyone has to go to school to a four-year degree, so we're trying to get, if you know, a plumber, electrician, a roofer, someone in construction, we could use those people as well. So we're going to continue that outreach and try and get, you know, not just the professional jobs out there, out there, but also, you know, the trades, because I think the trades are very important as well. So it's a lot of work. I enjoy a challenge, and I really appreciate this, this acknowledgement, and I'm really touched by it. Thank you.
We really appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd like to add, I've also had both of his sons, who are exemplary kids, too, so that's my added bonus.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
And I were chatting before the meeting, and I said, "You know, I remember my days in high school, and you really didn't know what occupations and what professions were out there." And you did go off to college, really not fully understanding what, what it was you were intending to do. So this, in addition to the Capstone Project, is giving our kids great experiences and what's out there in the real world.
Great.
Great stuff.
Thank you. And thank you again to Ben Maieany. We will move on to the report of the chairman. I actually have nothing this evening, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
I just want to point out that Diane Sawicki from Jackie Howell Middle School had asked that we extend the deadline on the retirement incentive, and so we'll talk a little bit about what those savings look like for next year in the budget discussion.
Great. Thank you. Any other discussion?
I think we need an amendment just to reflect the discussion regarding residency on the minutes.
On the minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can you just go into detail about that, please?
When we were voting for vice chair position, we had a discussion with Lee Crouch regarding the residency, and I just wanted to make an amendment to the minutes to reflect that.
Okay, those are not in the minutes?
Correct.
Thank you. So are you making an amendment to add those?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second to that amendment?
Second.
Thank you. Do I have a discussion to that amendment?
Well.
Alan.
What would it say?
What was said here in the meeting, that we had asked Lee if she was residing in Monroe.
Okay.
Just to reflect what the discussion was.
All right.
No, I forget nothing.
Do you have anything?
I don't know what it was.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Any other discussion on that?
That's all it's going to say?
I, I believe so. I think that's all that she's made the amendment to say, that there was a discussion.
There was a question that was never answered.
There was a question about residency, yes.
That wasn't answered, correct.
Okay, so that's it.
I'm sorry.
Anybody else have anything?
I mean, this is not open for discussion now. This is something that should, I think should be on our, on our radar to look at for the future, so things like this don't come up. I think that residency of, of any elected official in any town, but especially since we're concerned with Monroe, should be brought up to every board and commission here, but since we're worried about the Board of Ed, I think this is something we should look for our policies. Because if someone's not a resident, no longer living here, and whatever the criteria is, it needs to be brought up and dealt with.
Okay.
What is the criteria?
That I don't know.
Something, no, it's something we should have to put on an agenda one day to bring up.
The Charter specifically says that a, that any, any member of a board or a commission needs to be a resident of town.
But I don't know what the definition of residency is.
I don't know what the definition is.
What is the definition of residency?
Well, for example, in Monroe, somebody, I think, wanted to run for elected office this year, and although they owned property in Monroe, they weren't residing in Monroe, so they weren't allowed to run for elected office.
Right. I think we need the state of Connecticut actual determination.
Well, it's not just the state, it's the town charter as well.
Right, it would be the town charter, but it would also be the state, like, I don't know, like.
There is a state statute spelling out what things are.
Right.
And there's also what's in our charter as well.
Right. But that's not what we want the minutes to reflect.
No, the minutes just reflect that there was a question asked, and that was it.
That was unanswered, correct.
That was unanswered.
I think it was unanswered because of the ambiguity surrounding it.
No, it was just, "Are you a resident? Are you residing in Monroe?"
Which gets back to, what is a resident? Is it someone's property?
If you're living and working in another state, I don't think that would qualify you as a resident of Monroe.
I don't think, I don't think the question.
We don't know.
On the minutes, I don't think the question on the minutes is a, and correct me if I'm wrong, is a discussion about what is a resident. I think she's just saying that the minutes did not reflect that, that discussion, that's all. Not, not, "Was she a resident? Was she not a resident?" Nothing. All I think Shannon, and correct me if I'm wrong, is saying is that under that section, the minutes, even though it was recorded.
Right.
Does not state that that was asked as part of the minutes. That's all I think she's trying to say.
And I think that.
I don't think she's trying to make, I don't think anybody is saying that the minutes need to, the minutes should reflect anything regarding residency of Lee or anybody else, it's just that she's saying that that wasn't spelled out in the minutes that was, that was taken, that was it.
Yeah, the minutes reflect the discussion from the last meeting.
Correct.
Jeff's point is that, that we need to look at this at a board level or at a policy committee level, make sure we're lined up with what should be there.
I agree.
Yeah, not in the minutes.
And regarding minutes, if, if I may, minutes, you know, we, Diane does such a great job with the minutes, okay?
Yes, absolutely.
To the point where they're almost too well-done, okay? Quite honestly, because it's not the intent of the minutes to reflect every single conversation that happens around the table.
Correct.
It's to capture the essence of what's said, okay, about the topic and, and move on from there. If you read minutes from other boards and commissions, whether they're here in town or not, they're not usually as detailed as ours are, okay? So, I mean.
I, I agree with you. I think Diane does a great job, and that, I think one of the main purposes of what the minutes are for is to reflect votes, things that are voted on are supposed to be reflected. And the reason is that I believe that this is pertinent is because it was directly or indirectly pertaining to a vote.
Okay. I just don't get what the end game is with this.
I don't think it is. There is an end game.
There is no end game.
I think.
There was a discussion.
It was just.
She's just stating the fact that something was missing from the minutes, that's all.
Right. That that discussion was missing, and should just ask that that be included. That was it.
And the other.
And I think the whole line is, and, sorry, Jim, I think the whole line that Shannon just once in was that, that there was a discussion regarding vacancy, residency, excuse me, that was asked. That's as simple as that, right? Is that all you're at one?
Um, right, right.
Right. Nothing else?
And I don't think that we need to, I don't, I, it's, my understanding, I could be wrong, that we don't need to amend the minutes.
Okay.
I think what, what we do is, we, we don't have to have a vote to amend, okay? If, if a board member says that they, you know, that somebody's name was misspelled or something was left off the minutes, okay, then it's added to the minutes, and the minutes are approved as amended.
Okay.
Okay, so you don't need two votes.
Okay.
Just one vote, minutes as amended.
Okay.
Perfect. Any other further discussion on that?
No, no. Thank you.
All right. So all in favor of the consent agenda with the amended minutes? All in favor?
See, you're voting that one.
Okay, all opposed? Thank you.
John, is that, is that reflective of it?
That's what it says here.
Okay.
As long as you say amended minutes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. We will move on to reports of the committees and liaisons, and we'll start with our Massey board reps.
Hello, everyone. There isn't much, too much going on at Massey right now, because we only have a two-day school week, or two more days of school this week. But this Saturday is the open skate for the boys' ice hockey team from 7:30 to 9:30, and it's a fundraiser. And for winter sports, games are just starting, so most sports have had their first games in this past week, and hockey has a game at the Rinks tonight at 7:00.
And today, boys swimming actually had their first dual meet against Newtown, which we unfortunately lost, but we'll win the next one. And quarter two ends January 14th, and then midterms start the next day on January 15th.
This Wednesday's a half-day, so everybody's excited. We're going to have a break from the 24th to the 4th of January, and during that break, we'll be hosting a boys' basketball tournament at Massey on Saturday, the 26th, and also on the Tuesday right after that.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any reports? Do you have anything for communications, Alan?
Yeah, the Communications Committee met tonight, and the superintendent just talked about the budget, which I guess Gabby is going to go over. Superintendent also discussed, as it gets closer to the budget season, meeting with community members, stakeholders to discuss the budget, having a, and also, two weeks before the budget vote, having a budget informational session, which is something we've never done before, so I figured, you know, give that a shot. And we also discussed communications meeting more on an as-needed basis, because we're kind of draining. You know, when we originally formed this, the, the point was to get out good news about the district, and we've been pretty much doing that, and it's kind of starting to go on autopilot right now, so we just figure maybe, you know, meet once in a while, like on an as-needed basis if something comes up.
Okay, great. And then obviously more like towards budget and stuff like that.
Yeah, a few times a year.
Okay, perfect. Do you have anything for policy tonight?
Sure, yeah. We'll have two policies for board review next time for first review. The policy board also decided tonight that we will be meeting starting at 7:00 PM during our scheduled meetings instead of 6:30 going forward.
Great.
That was a big, big hit.
I'm sure it was. We did the same thing in finance. Anybody from public participation? All right, moving right along. We will move on to the report of the superintendent.
Okay. Gabby, why don't you take us through the, the fund statement?
Sure. As you can see, insurance is still trending quite well. Jim's actually going to speak about that a little bit later with regards to the budget. So as you all know, that's usually one of my huge sources of concern, but so far, we seem to have a relatively good year, and hopefully it continues that way. Utilities, as you've noticed, it's been a little warm-out, so we're not actually buying as much oil currently, and we're not actually using as much natural gas, which hopefully will continue, although some of us would like to see snow for Christmas and this, but, you know, at least the kids won't, okay? The other thing is, is that last Tuesday, I went to a meeting with the state and the USDA on food services, one of our favorite fund topics. And it, it was interesting. They are planning on putting out the template RFP the first week of January, so I'm hoping that means they'll actually have it out by, say, Friday, the 8th. One of the things that they're doing differently is rather than allowing us to include new equipment purchases in the RFP, they actually want us to do a separate process, which is called, it's an RFI, a request for information. So they want us to actually, we've actually, we've already done this, is to advertise, to do walkthroughs, to have any food service company that might possibly be interested in bidding, to walk through our kitchens and our cafeteria serving areas to see what equipment they would possibly recommend us buying through the RFP process. The twist to this is they cannot provide us with pricing. We then have to turn around and go price it. So I've, I've now added equipment managing sourcing to my, my list of trades, apparently. So we're going to do that. We actually already published the RFI, and we have a, we have a meeting date of January 8th, so, and then a walkthrough date of January 8th, and then we're going to ask them for their proposed lists of equipment by the following Friday, which is the 15th, which then we'll incorporate into the RFP when that finally comes out and do that whole process. The one thing they have done is they've shortened the time that we have to advertise the RFP from 45 to 60 days down to 30 calendar days. So theoretically, we could have an RFP and all the responses back by mid-March, which would then give us time to review it. The other thing that, and I'm not sure if it's the state mandating it or the USDA mandating it, because they kind of talked over one another at some points, we need to have at least three people review the bids, so we're going to ask, or have to ask you guys for a little bit of help on that. And the final thing on it is that price has to be the highest weighted component in determining the bids. So it's not that it has to be like 51 out of 100 points, but if you have five different areas, like price, service, compatibility with your district, whatever, it has to be weighted, say, 25, and then everything else has to be weighted less. So it just has to be the highest weighted component in the determining factors, but it could still be the lowest bid. So it's a little quirky. And they, the state and the USDA still sometimes talk at cross purposes, so it's going to be interesting to see how these templates look and what they actually say when we submit them.
But now, like, so let me just ask a question on the whole equipment thing. So you're determining, or is somebody walking around and determining, "Oh, your slicer isn't..."
Right.
They're consulting.
So, so we put out, what we did is, we put out a request for information, so we said, "Okay, on January 8th, could you please come meet," and I can't remember if I said to meet the central office, or if I said to meet at, I think I said to meet at central office, "Come meet, we're going to look at four of the schools." I don't think I'm going to have them look at Massey simply because we really just redid the whole serving area. There might be some equipment in the kitchen, kitchen part that needs to be done, but the serving area is basically brand-new. It's two years, this is our second year using it. So they'll walk through, they'll say, "Oh, we think you need a new oven here," or a new mix, I don't know, mixing bowl, not that we really use mixing bowls, but whatever, whatever, it might be a new deli slicer, a new panini press. I'm hoping they don't say new steam tables, because all the elementaries have upgraded, you know, everything, a lot of stuff got upgraded to and.
Right. That's why I'm asking.
Right. So it's going to be interesting to see what they come up with. Then I have to turn around and go price it, so what I, what I'm probably going to do is use the person who supplied us two summers ago to price it, because I, I honestly don't know where else to go get prices on commercial kitchen equipment, because it's not really something that I'm that familiar with. You know, I'm better at home.
We have a board member who is, though.
I do? Okay, good. Come see me later.
Yeah, yeah. I'll do the walkthrough with you.
That's, that'd be great.
I still have connections at different suppliers, too.
Okay, that would be awesome, because, you know, I mean, we, all of the business managers that were there, we were all kind of kidding around, we're like, "Oh, great, we, we can go buy a stove or an oven for our homes, I can rejig my kitchen," because we've all watched enough HGTV to do a lifetime, but most of those shows don't talk about school kitchens.
Just let me know when you have the walkthrough.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm just a, a little perplexed, like, why wouldn't, like, the food service people who are bidding say, "This is what we think you need," if they're going to be the.
Everybody has a different way of doing things in the kitchen where they work themselves. So there's certain things that they want to serve, that they would use a different type of machinery that, that we might have, that'll make it better for them to better serve our kids.
But that's not what's happening, what they're, they're taking the food service people out of the mix.
Yeah.
And then sending a third party in to, to advise us what we need, but that might not be what the food service company wants.
Well, the food service person's looking at a boilerplate.
So, well, the food service companies are going to be the ones who come and do the walkthroughs, and they're going to say, "Oh, we think you need this, this, and this, and this." What they can't do is price it for me, so I have to go to an actual vendor to price it.
And that's a USDA rule.
And that's the USDA rule, because part of the problem, I think, is that the USDA views this as procurement contracts, as opposed to how the rest of the world views this, which is a service contract. And that's primarily because we get money from the federal government for free and reduced lunch for the US, for the National Healthy School Lunch Program. So to them, we're procuring things, whereas to us, the food service management companies are providing a service. I mean, one of the business managers from, I believe it was a gentleman from Richfield, he basically said, "Look, it's, what's the difference between a food service management company and when you hire a bus company to run your buses? We don't tell them what buses to buy, we don't tell them how to do certain things. We give them the guidelines, but they create and develop things, they hire the drivers, they make sure the drivers, you know, have their commercial driver's licenses, aren't, you know, aren't on any lists of sex offenders or whatever." It's the same with the food service management companies, they hire the employees, they do all, that's why we hire them.
Right. And that's my point, like, why.
Because the US government has decided that's not the right way to do it.
So now, what happens if somebody come, they, you have somebody come in and say, "You need X, Y, and Z," and we're like, "No, those are brand-new, we're not changing those up."
Well, what happens then is, I then have to go through the list of proposed new equipment. If something like that happens, I'll be like, "Yeah, no, we're not going to do that, we're not going to do that." I then have to price it and write those pieces of equipment into the actual bid with the proposed pricing next to it, so it has to become part of the bid with actual pricing. What's happened in the past, we've always had a line that said, "New equipment," and it's been kind of, it's been ambiguous, because I, I don't know what we would have needed. It's just not my area of expertise. So it, it's a brave new world, it'll be interesting. There's 49 other districts going through it, plus, I think, about 10 others that have to go out to rebid anyway. So it'll be interesting to see what happens.
And now, just a weird new way of doing that.
We'll have fun, you and I together.
I think I'm going to learn a lot more about kitchen equipment.
Well, congratulations on your new appointment.
Thank you.
Kitchen equipment manager.
Let me get your chef, though. Let me get your chef robe. That was good.
Anything else, Gabby, with the fund statement?
No. That's pretty much it.
Anybody have any other questions on that or anything else in the fund statement? No?
Okay, let's talk a little bit about budget. If you look at the, page 23 of your packet, if you look at the line graph there of the drawdown on the reserve fund, when we pay for the services out of the reserve fund, you can see, it's hard to perceive. I've always had difficulty perceiving a pattern here, but there is a pattern. And if you look typically, the fall into December tends to be relatively low hits on the reserve, whereas springtime, it tends to go up dramatically till June, okay? And there's some logic to all of that happening. What happens is that the, as people use up their HSA, and then they start paying from the medical reserve account, okay? And that's when it starts to get drawn down. So we know that the springtime, we will tend to, there will be a trend to uptick the payout from that account. Right now, we're in that slow period, okay? And that's why Ovation and Cigna is always so leery or weary of trying to make predictions about the future when you don't have that history yet into the springtime, okay? And so their first effort with us this year at proposing a budget increase in the medical portion of our budget was to increase our medical by $500,000. Now, just some notes about that. One, because of our reductions in staff for the past couple of years, our number of participants in the program is dropping. So it's not that we have more people accessing the medical account. What Jay is telling me and Cigna is telling us is that medical procedures, the cost of medical procedures has gone up so dramatically and continues to go up, and that's why he was recommending at that time a $500,000 increase in our medical outlays, okay? Last Friday, Jay called and gave us a revised estimate of what we should do. He sees that we're trending very positively, okay? And he and Cigna both agree that we could scale back that increase, okay? Now, there's a bit of a range that we could scale here, okay? Gabby and I are very worried about scaling too far, okay? It's too early to tell yet, okay? They gave us a range that we could cut the $500,000 by 200,000 to 300,000. We're recommending a $200,000 cut in that line item, okay? And just, let's wait and see, folks, because, you know, we could have some catastrophic losses, you know, a premature child, anything could throw this completely out of whack. And, you know, as you know, we've been working so hard with the Board of Finance and trying to make sure that our reserve fund is not overdoing it, okay? And we've been very good about that, but we don't wanna get into a situation where we overexpend that budget either. So my suggestion is that we take $200,000, actually $205,744, out of that proposed increase and take that out of the budget, okay? In addition, we got the additional Diane Sewicki's retirement, okay? And we believe that hiring, that position has to be replaced, okay? We believe that by hiring, you know, a younger, less experienced teacher, we could probably save about $48,000 in that line item. And so that would bring us to a grand total increase over this year's budget of 1.96%, which I think is really phenomenal. It's a phenomenal place to be at this early stage of the game, okay? The only thing is, you know, I wanna reserve the right to talk again as spring approaches about the medical.
Right.
And we could reexamine that. But, so right now, we're talking about, you know, those two budget adjustments for a grand total of $253,744, giving us a revised budget of $54,861,767, or a 1.96% increase over this year's spending. And with that, I'll take any questions on any other budgetary items that people have, if you've had any left over from previous workshops or board meetings.
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to say thank you to Jim and John and Gabby and everybody else who worked hard on this budget. After years of working with everybody on budgets and other projects that we've had, I know for a fact that you guys, the team, really takes into consideration the town of Monroe and the money that comes in to the town, to pay the bills for the town as a whole, and especially the Board of Education, that every dollar spent is spent wisely. And, you know, many years, people have always heard, you know, there's no fluff in the budget, and, you know, from prior superintendents and prior people, but I personally know that I can say this without any reservation, that when our team here, not the Board of Education, but our administrators, put out a budget, this is a damn good budget that they're putting out, and they really take into consideration, not only the children in Monroe, but the town people in Monroe, the taxpayers. So I applaud everybody, our team, for doing such a great job, and I really appreciate all your hard work.
Well, thank you for that, Jeff. And just to piggyback on that a little bit, last year, you'll remember, now, we just got the audit done, and so what was the final number, Gabby, that we committed to the capital improvement?
Um...
Fund $18,000 something? The leftover from last year's budget?
Yeah, no, we originally thought it was $46,000. The auditors upped it, because they changed the way we accrued payroll. I think it was, I think it was 118 with the change in the accrual.
Okay.
So it just changes, it just changes, like, how they wanted us to do, they wanted us to gross, do something gross rather than net, which is, it's fine.
Right.
I mean, that can swing back and forth on a yearly basis on how we accrue payroll.
The point, the point being that in a $53, $54 million budget, to have that little wiggle room at the end, Gabby and I were very nervous last spring as we got down to closing out the budget. That's not a lot of wiggle room, especially if something were to happen to one of the buildings, or if we had a shovel snow off the roofs or something like that. So, you know, we do take it seriously, Jeff, and I very much appreciate your comments. As a taxpayer in my town, I don't want my money languishing. I want it to do the work it's supposed to do, nothing more, nothing less. So, thank you.
Does anybody else have questions on the budget or anything that they wanna say? I agree with your approach for medical. It's better to be conservative, you just never know what's gonna happen.
Mm-hmm.
You don't know what's gonna happen next week if somebody comes in and...
Stop loss.
And they're gonna reach stop loss, we can't predict that.
Right.
Better be safe, and if it's still trending that well, come February or March, when you now have most of the year under your belt, then if we can make a reduction, then we'll make that or, you know...
And then some.
Before it goes out to vote.
Yep. And that's been our mantra right from the beginning, is that we'll make those adjustments. If we can find, you know, just because the board is going to adopt their budget on January 4th, doesn't mean that we won't still be picking away, looking for areas where we might be able to grab some savings, and we'll continue to do that throughout the spring and right up to the referendum.
We should have John and Jack and Gabby share one office.
Yeah, that might work.
Funny you should say that.
One last thing then for superintendent's report. Jack and I will be accompanying tomorrow evening, the town council, as I'm sure you're aware, has created a strategic planning. It's not called strategic planning, though, is it?
Yeah.
It's a strategic planning team on the town side. Jack and I attended the last meeting because we knew, we anticipated there was gonna be some questions about Chalk Hill coming up and that, and so we spent the time trying to help the committee understand that building. Tomorrow evening, they have their, another meeting, and they've scheduled some time to actually go and tour Chalk Hill, so we, Jack and I, will accompany them and take a look at Chalk Hill and point out what we see as the deficiencies in that building, what are the positive things in the building, what are the deficiencies in the building, to help them, you know, ascertain what it is they wanna do going forward. We do know that Sandy Hook, of course, is moving out in June, and so that building and the whole issue surrounding that building kinda comes back onto the radar screen.
Any update on the field, if that's back on, if that's on their agenda?
At this time, it is not, but I hope to have some conversation soon and see where that stands. I should know more before we break for the holiday.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on budget or anything else? All right, hearing none, well, I guess, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second? Thank you. All in favor? All right, have a great holiday, everybody.
Yeah. Have a great holiday.
You too.
You too.